Welcome everyone to this regular meeting of the Walpole Select Board. As we always do at the start of our meetings, let's stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so our first appointment of the evening is with Elizabeth Roof, seeking appointment to the Ponds Committee. Elizabeth, could I ask you to just step up to the podium for a second and start by thanking you for being willing to serve on the Ponds Committee? It's a really important committee, given the number of ponds we have in town, and some of the activities that are going on on some of them. So we generally ask people just come and say a little bit about who they are and why they want to be on the committee, very light. So I'll turn it over to you.
All right. I'm Elizabeth Roof. And my husband grew up in Walpole and skated on the local ponds. And a few years ago, I, we got involved with Turner Pond, and my children have all learned to skate there and play hockey. I just found it to be this great place, and I enjoyed taking care of it and running it. And so that's basically why I just wanted to get involved.
Well, that's great. Thank you again for being willing to do it. Any questions for Elizabeth?
No, but I would back something you just said. I think that one of the things that makes Walpole a great town is all the people willing to volunteer to help others. So I say thank you for volunteering, and I think that's a great thing.
Thank you.
Anyone else? David?
Just thank you for your work already, and now willing to take on a bigger role. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Elizabeth Roof to the Ponds Committee.
I'll second that.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye, 4-0-0, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Cindy will be in touch with you on next steps on what to do, okay?
Excellent, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you, Elizabeth. Okay, and so moving right along, we have another appointment to the Ponds Committee. This is Robert Kugnali. So Robert, if you could step up to the microphone. I don't know if I pronounced your name correctly, so if I didn't, please correct me.
Sorry, I took my wife about four years. I'm Robert Kugnali. Been in Walpole for about four and a half years. Family, father, man, grew up playing hockey on ponds and want to get back to the community. My son plays, or plays hockey, skates on the pond as well. Connecting with Elizabeth as well as Dave here, and it's a great thing there, and just want to get back and keep the volunteering going and keep the place alive. So appreciate it and hope your consideration.
That's awesome, and thank you very much for volunteering. Again, as I said to Elizabeth, this is a really important part of what we do, and we're very, very lucky in Walpole to have the kind of ponds we have and the pond structure we have, so thank you.
You're welcome. Come bring the skates.
Yeah, absolutely. So David, any questions for Robert?
No, thank you again.
I'll just say thanks. You heard me a minute ago, so same, same applies. I appreciate your volunteering.
Entertain a motion?
Make a motion to appoint Robert Kugnali to the Ponds Committee.
I'll second that.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye, 4-0-0. Robert, thank you again. Cindy will be in touch, okay?
And you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. Okay, if you leave.
Wait a minute. Quick, quick, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Kevin Spindly up now for Economic Development Committee appointment. Kevin, thank you for coming tonight and volunteering.
I'm Kevin Spindly. I moved to Walpole 13 years ago. I have a daughter who's going to be a senior in high school, or is a senior in high school, Walpole High. Some folks may know my wife. She's been active in, with the Junior Women's Club, and she's been active as an RTM member for a lot of years. And I guess my role's been supporting them the last 13 years. But as I'm looking to wind down my career finally, I'm looking to, you know, help volunteer. You know, what better than, you know, the community I live in? And when Mark Romeo reached out, you know, for this opportunity, I figured my 40 years in business would, you know, help come along. I've never seen an issue or an opportunity that I couldn't work with or, you know, break down into pluses and minuses, or positives and negatives. So, you know, I'm looking to take that experience and, you know, bring it forward to the town of Walpole.
Awesome. Economic Development Committee is a very important committee as well, and we rely heavily on it. It's nice to have people volunteering for that, so thank you. Any comments or questions, David?
I'd just say the same thing. I've seen you at various points at fundraisers and events in Walpole. I think you do a great job in economic development, and I know you had a long career and an MBA, so thanks for applying.
So, a motion?
Make a motion to appoint Kevin Spindly to the Economic Development Committee.
I'll second that.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye, 4-0-0. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you guys, happy holidays. Slide out the door.
And Cindy, Cindy will be in touch with you as well, okay? All right. Thanks, Kevin. Hello, Carl, how are you?
I'm well. Good night, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm here before you to complete the final step in making the end of Hancock Court a public way. If you recall, you voted to lay out the road in September and laid it out. Meeting accepted your layout, and now the final step is to actually acquire the rights and the way and the easements that go with it. So you have an order of taking that takes the public right and the public way as before you to sign, and you have an acceptance that actually accepts limited rights and a drainage and access easement that was granted when the subdivision was created, but is not effective until you accept it tonight. The final action item will be for us to take these documents and the Mylar Acceptance Plan to the Registry and Record, which we will do so shortly after this. And there are some time limits on that, so it needs to be done fairly soon. So we have also provided, I think, some reduced size plans to make sure you actually know what you're acquiring rights in, and a brief memo explaining it, but that's, and I know Ms. Ruby has furnished a vote for you, and that's what I'm asking you to do tonight.
Wonderful, thank you, Carl. And this was voted in a town meeting in the fall, as I understand, for acceptance, so any...
Yes, and the documents are the same that have been used in prior most immediate acceptances in the last few years. Everything is all in the same fashion, and it's essentially been done for many, many years.
Great. Thank you, Carl. Questions for Carl? David?
Nope.
Mark?
Nope.
Entertain a motion?
I make a motion to adopt, endorse, and notarize the Order of Taking of Land for Hancock Court Station 670.65 to 11 plus 18.47, and to file in the office of the town clerk.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, 4-0-0. Thank you, David. Carl, thank you very much. We'll sign the documents right now, and it will be all set. Thank you, Carl. Is there just one, Cindy?
Looks like there's a second.
Yep, there is.
Oh, is there a second? Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Make a motion to accept, endorse, and notarize conveyance of easements and granted utilities and roadway easement for Hancock Court Station 6 plus 70.65 to 11 plus 18.47 to end.
I'll second that.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye, 4-0-0. Thank you. I think we're done now, Carl. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're early for open forum, so I'm going to move us ahead to new business. We have a number of votes to take here, so... First up is renewal of licenses for parking lots, as listed in our document 12-17. So I'll make a motion to renew the parking lot licenses as listed in document 12-17.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
So are these the lots for Patriots events?
Yes.
Okay, for the Gillette events. I just wanted a, something I ran into, and I don't know, I haven't resolved it to its full extent yet, but our authority to charge for the parking lots arises out of a bond issue for the improvements around building the stadium. Those are running out in the next couple of years, so it's, we may have to look at, the state will not, at that, the point that the bond expires, I don't think the state can charge anymore, and I'm not sure that we can either. So it's just something to look at, and I've been unable to locate where that, who the bonding authority is. Like, I know when the stadium's built, but I don't know when the bond was issued, but it's going to be within the next two or three years that that bond is going to go away.
Gotcha.
And that, the authority to do this, the whole process that we have, we're dealing with the state, and they tell us what to collect for them, that's all related to this bond issue. So we just got to keep an eye out for that and maybe try and figure out where that bond is.
All right, yeah.
I contacted Foxborough, and they didn't know anything about it, so I don't, I don't know where we get that info.
Okay, good, thanks, David, appreciate that. Any further discussion? Okay, a motion?
Motion seconded, actually.
So it was, then, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, 4-0-0.
Make a motion to renew the entertainment licenses as listed in document 12-18.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Being none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, 4-0-0.
I would make a motion to renew the common picture owners licenses as listed in document 12-19.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, 4-0-0.
I would make a motion to renew the hotels, motel, and lodging licenses as listed in document 12-20.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, 4-0-0. Okay, next up, we have a, an extension of the agreement between the town and the Walpole Media Corp. Jim, do you want to give a quick rundown on what this is?
Sure. This is, we had multiple year, three-year options to renew the licensing agreement with Walpole Cable at the time, that's what it was called. It's since chained to Walpole Media Corp., WMC. And this renewal was run by council. It's just a simple extension. It's in compliance with the agreement that was signed by the board. We are a little late on it. The agreement actually ended in 2018. I had a note to myself to go back and look at it. Two or three weeks ago, I looked at it, and I realized, so I asked you to add it on here. So we're just kind of making a hole. They've been running everything. Town meeting's been appropriating the money, and they've been broadcasting more and more, it seems, each, each month. So I know they're, they had some personnel issues with filling some vacancies, but now I think they're getting up to speed.
Okay. Any questions on the agreement?
I'd make a motion to renew and extend the agreement between the town of Walpole and Walpole Media Corporation effective December 17th, 2019, for an additional three-year term, which will expire on December 31st, 2022.
I'm going to abstain, so I'm not going to second it, just because I'm on the Walpole Media Board, so just want to let you know that.
Okay, I'll second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. And Mark, you abstain, so 3-0-1.
Apparently, we missed one of the licensing groups.
Yeah, 12-21.
All right.
I'll make a motion to renew the Class 1, 2, and 3 vehicle licenses as listed in document 12-21.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Being none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, 4-0-0. Okay, now we've got a request to, for new message boards. Jim, you want to just take us through this quickly?
Yes. I issued a memo to you folks, I believe it was last week, and this is more of one of those, it's, these, these message boards are issued and used throughout the entire town. All of a sudden, both of them went down. We've kind of patchworked them together over the last two years. Capital process just really finished up with town meeting. I really rattled my brain as to whether or not we should go forward with a reserve fund, just not use the signed boards for the next, you know, however many months, nine months, but I think it's a real necessity in town to get a lot of the messages out when there's an emergency, when there's an election. And after looking over everything and looking over the PEG agreements, I went to Jody and I said, can you check and see if we could use the PEG funds? This is a communication, they are computerized, they link into our network, they check a lot of the boxes there. She was comfortable with it. She reviewed the agreements that we have in place. We currently have $286,000 in that account. Your board did release some of the money to be used in this room, which we didn't really need to. So that's where we stand with this request. Police chief is fully on board with it. I asked Patrick to go out and see if anything was on the, any of the state bid list, and they are actually on the MAPC, Greater Boston Police Council Purchasing Consortium list, so it's something we could get in place pretty quickly. And it's, I think it's a necessity to have.
Okay. Any questions for Jim?
The only question I have is, what are you going to do with the old ones?
We're going to surplus them out, and I'm actually going to see if they're worth anything as a trade.
Yeah, good, all right. All right. Entertain a motion?
Make a motion to authorize the police department to purchase two silent messenger, two mid-sized message boards from the cable access funds in the amount of $41,876.
I'll second that.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye, 4-0-0. Next order of business is a, an employment agreement with the town accountant, so a contract for the town accountant. And Jim, why don't you give us some rationale on, so that we're clear on why we're doing this, and then I've got a couple...
Sure, I'd love to give you some background. So this is an agreement that was, town accountant Jody Cunio, who's been here for seven, eight years now, she's doing an excellent job. She's one of the main reasons our budget is running as smoothly and as well as it has over the last five or six years. She's showing, she's desired in other communities, and this locks us up for some time with Jody. We have done employment agreements with employees in the past. Most recent ones that come to mind, Rick Mattson, when he was the water superintendent, and when he transitioned over to the DPW director, Mike Janovich, who came in as our building commissioner, and Marilyn Thompson as our finance director. It is pretty much on board with everything that's in place for the personnel bylaws. It complies with the bylaws. A few years ago, maybe three or four, I think it was when Anne was on the board, we received an illegal opinion from town council that, you know, the board can enter into a legal agreement. I know for a fact that the town accountant is specified in Mass General laws for employment agreements, so it's more or less, I think it's a wise idea to lock up someone who's a really vital part of our town government.
Yeah. Any questions for Jim?
I'll just make a comment. I think, I like Jody. I think she's doing a great job. I think this is a good way to keep her with the town for three more years, so I think it's a good thing.
Okay. And I agree with that, and knowing the, the job market and so forth right now, I don't think that we want to put ourselves at risk. I think it's a good way to resolve that issue, and Jody has been doing a wonderful job. You know, these budget processes are really running very well right now, and that's a lot of Jody, so I'm good with that as well. So I'll entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve and sign the terms and conditions of employment agreement between the town of Walpole and its town accountant for a three-year term beginning on July 1st, 2020, through June 30th, 2023.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, 4-0-0.
Thank you.
So next, we've got the Townhouse Reuse Committee discussion. I think, I think I asked to put this back on.
And you did, and if you may recall, I actually should have printed some of the ideas out. I think for the most part, the board was comfortable with some of the mission statements and the committee makeup. I know there are some residents in town. Ted Hagler comes to mind, I think maybe Ron Fusillo, Roger Turner, to name a few, who are really interested in serving and participating in the anniversary. So at this point, I'd really like some direction from the board. Would you, I can reissue the, the mission statement and the charge that we drafted last week. I think, Jim, you had one or two comments off the top of my head, and we can kind of formalize this early in the new year to, to get a start on, I know we've got to talk about fundraising appropriations, what's going to be planned, so that's really, I wanted some direction from the board.
Yeah, so, so first of all, just clarification. So it does say Townhouse Reuse Committee.
Sorry, I'm thinking 300th anniversary. Sorry, I was thinking 300th anniversary, but that kind of pulled tied together, so my bad.
Okay, so we'll make sure we're not signing these guys up for the wrong committee.
Yeah, sorry about that.
So I think we really do need to do this. You know, we go back to the discussion we had some weeks ago after Ted sent that, that package in, and with the 300th anniversary coming up in 2024, part of, part of the question is if there's going to be a need to allot any money to the celebration, that it'd be smart to do that through multiple funding cycles through town meeting and allow you to budget that out, Jim. So I think getting an exploratory committee together and getting some initial feedback on what that might look like is, is in, you know, our best interest, and 300 years is 300 years. We should do a bang-up job on it, so...
And just to link it back to the, because I see the 300th in the Townhouse really linked, and that's what, kind of my, where my mind went with it.
I tried to assign these guys up for the...
And it's like, we have to, that's, that's a centerpiece of the town.
I agree.
We've issued an RFB, we've got no interest on it. We had a committee worked hard for 18 months or so, and they rattled their brain. Most recently, I met with Dawn Anderson, local architect, Kevin Uniak, and Patrick. We walked through it, and we talked. We have about $17,000, $20,000 left in the appropriation to do some, I think it was, architectural exploration, remediation on some of the asbestos areas, so we do have some money there. So I had asked Kevin, show me what you can do with this top area, and can you, is there a way to open it up easily? Because that, the roof that is on the, I'll call it the third floor, where the archway is above the police training offices and Roger's old office, that's not a structural roof. We could easily take that out, Kevin thought, after looking at it, and kind of lay it out for us, and then get some, get us to bid-ready documents, because we have to get that building up and, and looking marketable if we're going to actually use it as a collaborative learning space or rent it out. Because right now, the point, it's, it's obviously not. We advertise it in the Globe, we've reached out to local realtors, we've reached out to local people who own multiple properties in the downtown area. The interest just isn't there right now.
So you mentioned 17,000?
Yeah.
I, I don't know what really needs to be done, but that 17,000 doesn't feel like it's going to go very far.
It's not. It's really going to get Kevin to get us some bid-ready documents to, to bid it out, and we can get some numbers for us probably, or definitely by the fall town meeting, but just really get some pricing on it. I've reached out to the Department, the Economic Housing Secretary, it used to be Jay Ash, now it's Mike Canary, who's undersecretary from a few years ago, because we did get awarded that $1 million bond about two years ago. They're sitting on that, they'd like to do something, and I think this is, he said, it's a good thing if you have no bidders, because that means we can actually come in and invest some of that money in there. So I'm hoping we can go back to them in the new year and say, listen, you told us, if you got no bidders, you'd really be interested in it, because it's a downtown revitalization, checks a lot of boxes for them.
Yeah, I mean, we've got, we've got to, we've got to do something, and time's a wasting. Is there anything that we should be thinking about for the, the spring town meeting on this?
As far as appropriation?
Yeah.
One of the, we've already appropriated everything but 200,000 in free cash, and quite honestly, when I give you the update on snow and ice, right, it's not looking good. It may be something we want to consider, but I don't want to go to town meeting with, we want to do something, but we're not really sure what. I think if we go to town meeting, we should have some bid-ready documents at hand. By, by the fall, I'll know. They told me that the cycle for their grant is, it comes up, I think, in late August, so we'll know by the fall. So I guess the answer's no, if you're putting me on the spot for the spring.
Yeah, all right. So then, what's, what's the ask right now?
Right now, the ask is, you know, give me a month or two, let me report back to you guys with this, as to where we are with working with Kevin and Dawn, and see if I can get something out of the Housing and Economic Development Secretary.
All right, good, good. David?
I, I would just say at this point that, I'm not sure, I'll, we'll have a discussion offline about it, but I don't know what a bid-ready doc, if we're spending money on a bid-ready document, I don't know what, what that's going to be when we don't, I, I don't, I don't see, I, I think we sort of have a, have to have a concept of what we want and the end, the end to look like before we spend money on that. I think, I think the key for now, at least, is to make sure that we've got the funds to keep it secure and keep the damages, and, you know, have some money to address those And I've said before, and I, I just think, if we, we don't, I don't know that we, as a town, have a use for it presently, and if we don't, that we ought to be looking at, you know, either creating a corporation that holds it private, because what, tax credits could, preservation tax credits could be the key to getting this building done. And the only way you can qualify for preservation tax credit is if it is in an entity that pays taxes. And the value of this is not only do people want to buy these tax credits, and so that we get some investment into the project, but if a bank, a local bank, invests in this project, they gets, they get some very, they, when they use these tax credits, they actually get a bonus if it's a local bank. So there's all these other incentives that are created if we can put this into a private hands. And there's some companies out there that, that do this type of work, and, you know, that, there's, those are the kind, I think that's the request, the proposals that we were, we want to look for, is that partnership with some organization that will do the tax credits. And what, one of the things we might want to be doing as far as getting help from the government is trying to get some of these agencies to sign a 10-year lease on the property, take part of the property, even if it's just a third of it. And what that does also is it creates a, an extra collateral that banks are willing to, to take a loan off that stream of income. That's, that's definitely coming from the state or from the, the county or something. So, and there's a lot, I, I agree, we need to take the third floor off. There's a, there's a chapel and sandwich mass that's been redone. If you look at that, what they did was, they took half of the ceiling off, and they actually made a third floor and half of it. So they created the extra space, but you still got the feeling of the full, the full space. And it really made a great usable space. So, yeah, there's a, there's a lot to look at. And I think, and as I said, is, I think the way that we make this building usable is by making the back left-hand corner a new building, attached to that building, which would contain all the bathrooms, all the elevators, all of these stairways, and that way, the old building could be put into its full use. And that's not, that would, that is allowed under the, the standards and guidelines by the Department of Interior, as long as you do it, try and do it in a space that's less visible, and you're not trying to make, make it look like old building. You want it actually to be glass and metal, because you want it to stand up. And then reorient the entrance towards the back parking lot. And I don't think we're going to do that without outside investment, and that, because we need to find a way, I mean, there were some great ideas from the committee, but they were all, not only, we want, we want it to have another 100 years of life, and those type of things, give it another 100 years. Us, paper and band-aiding a program together where we have a few tenants in there and fix it up a little bit, that's not going to give it its, its life for the next 100 years. that's not gonna give it's, its, its life for the next hundred years. We, we have to kind of do something dramatic so that it, it, it sustains the next hundred years.
So, so you've said a bunch of really interesting things there. And now, the question in my mind is, how do we take some of those interesting things forward and go explore them? Really actually go and look at it and really go explore and turn it into real action?
Okay, so that, I, I've spoken to some architects who, that, this is the type of work they do. They not only bid on these projects, but they, they help the municipality get through this process. So that, and, um, I actually sent three examples to Patrick of, of the work of one of these groups and basically created, you know, the whole layout. So, um, but we have to get to the point where we're willing to, um, look at unique ways of holding this property. I mean, we can create a, a corporation, um, far as I public, I, I'm not sure exactly, but we could have members of the corporation that are represented by the town, so that, you know, that this, this can go forward for the future. Um, but we have to be, have that discussion as to whether, whether we're willing to give up some control to, to get into that system, or, you know, or what are the alternatives there? And I think that might be where we need to look at as far as.
So there's a couple of elements that, first of all, the architect piece you talked about, do you think it would be, uh, smart to maybe get a couple of those architects you've talked to to come in and actually meet with us? Sit down and, and talk about, you know, really, what would it take to actually move an idea forward, okay? And then, the second piece sounds more like a legal type thing, where we'd have to say, now, what, what's the process of establishing a corporation if that's the path we decide to get out? And, 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 and what's the real purpose of that corporation in terms of, cause what you're trying to do is create a funding vehicle there through that corporation so that the town doesn't have to do it, yet we achieve something that the town can be proud of, right? So, how, how, the first piece I kind of get with the architects, what about the second piece?
That's, I'm not sure exactly how they've done that, but I, they pointed, they showed me, um, a similar building in another town that they did exactly that, that it, it left the town's hands, it got, um, qualified for the tax credits. All this investment money came in and they created a new use for it.
Where was it?
Uh, I, I don't, I don't remember. Um, it was local though. I think they did something, they, uh, one of the projects was definitely in Plymouth, but that might have been a state project. Um, there was an armory that they did, um, and there was a similar townhouse that they did. Um, so, you know, she was actually, the woman I spoke to was very excited, said, oh, this is right in that bailwreck. This is right in that kind of project that we would be excited to be involved in.
Can, can we get back in touch with her and get the details? Cause, cause again, I, I wanna try and drive some real, real action, you know? Not just sort of the theory, but how do we turn it to reality?
Right, cause I, I think, I mean, people say, well, you can't sell it. Well, we're not gonna quite sell it. We're going to give, we're going to create it, put it in a, in a state where it's, it has a future. Cause it, it needs more attention than a municipality can give it.
It does. So, I, I think those sound like some, some interesting ideas to follow up on. And Jim, maybe that can tie in with some of the things you've got in mind too. But, um, I don't know if it means setting up a workshop meeting where we could actually grind through some of this stuff, or?
Let me, um, yeah, Patrick should already have some of those things.
Just sent him a note asking for it.
And, um, we can get in touch with them and see if they wanna, you know, come in and s, cause what, like I said, some of these organizations will come in and, um, as we were talking about, get it all ready for a bid. But we have to be ready to be talking about transferring ownership or creating a different type of ownership of this thing, um, rather than just a bid for, you know, us to be landlords or us to be, which isn't, isn't gonna work well.
No, no.
So, and if we, I mean, if we do something on the political outsides, what we ought to be asking is like, you know, trying to get us delegation to say, just put a little agency in here. Give us, give us a third of the building. We don't even need the whole thing. It's enough to get the lights on and get the building filled and then others will come. Um, and, you know, it helps in the whole funding mechanism is, we're doing it for this group and we're, we're, we're doing.
That makes sense. I, I, and it sounds like it's something that.
Um, there's some great example, one of them in Providence that they, I actually, it was, uh, the old Providence Journal building. Um, this organization took it up, sold the tax credits. They had covered this beautiful building with, um, corrugated metal and they had taken it all off. It's beautiful. It's right next to City Hall. The city rented this horrible space in the basement that no one else in this world would ever rent. And the state rented the top floor and then they filled the, the middle floors with other tenants and it worked out great. So that's the kinda, you know, and that was all, and they sold these tax credits on the markets and they got all this extra money into a project.
Okay, good, good conversation. Let's, let's follow that up, cause, uh, you know, again, we need to, we need to get moving on this.
Like, we don't, we don't wanna be a landlord for the next fifty years.
That I agree with. I, I, I like the direction you're, you're thinking in, but I'm not, I, I don't know enough about it.
Right, it's, it's, there's controls on it to keep it from, like, someone, you know, doing whatever they want within the future, but there's, it, the, the money that comes in is well worth it, um, to give up a little bit of control.
Yeah. Any thoughts from over this side? I need to shut you guys out.
No, I, I, I like the idea of doing something with the building. I like it to be a viable building. So I, I think between talking to the state, seeing about the money that, that has sort of a promise, but hasn't yet been delivered, and seeing if maybe they participate in these kind of things as well, um, plus the things you've talked about, David. You know, I don't wanna sell the building, but I'm perfectly okay with setting up an entity that will run and control it and the whole bit and not, you know, so I, I'm good with the whole concept. I, I just, you know, wouldn't wanna see it become a rooming house or something.
Right, yeah, but like the, it basically the, the, how, there would be controls on how it would be renovated, right from the beginning. Everything, everything.
And we'd be a participant in some way.
And we wouldn't transfer it until all of that, the bid was all together and all of these things were, were to go.
It's a good idea.
Um, so, um.
And we don't want it to be empty in ten years. I mean, that doesn't help anybody. It's right downtown, it's a great spot.
You say, well, let's, you know, let some community groups use it, you're just kicking it down the road, because it's, you're never gonna get enough money out of it to keep it maintained or get it back to the splendor it once was.
It needs an investment to.
Really would be nice.
Even a million dollars from the state doesn't get it very far, so somebody's gotta really be able to invest in it and then.
But that's where the tax credits can really come in very handy, because those are selling on the secondary market, so, you know, that's, that's good creative thinking. Ben?
Um, yeah, I would just add that, that TCAN and NADIC, um, is a, uh, old fire station that they, over the course of about twelve years, was re-bought, redone, and is now a thriving performing arts center. Um, and I believe is substantially smaller than the building we have here in Walpole. So it's been done on the local level before, and that was literally this group of businesses and residents that drove the entire thing forward, is my understanding. Um, I, I just had a couple more concrete questions. Um, Jim, you had said the seventeen thousand that was gonna be used, that's used for the plans to do some of the remediation, like remove the ceiling and do?
Yeah, and well, was to get, I asked Kevin to get me some conceptual drawings as to what we could do up there, do some studies, confirm that it's, um, that third floor is, is in fact, we can easily be taken out and demoed. And that the, I wanted them to check the ADA compliance on the elevator there, because that elevator, Dawn and I were talking, we think it's like eighty-two, eighty-four, functional, uh, but I wanna see if it, if it meets today's standards if we are grandfathered in, because the front staircases do not, and they'd have to be, um, like an infant can get their, their head through the, it's all the spindles or whatever. So there's, there's some things I needed Kevin to look into and work with us, and obviously his time is gonna cost some money, because he's gonna need to meet with the Architectural Access Board to see what, what would be acceptable to the, to them to do, for us to do any type of improvements over there.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea. In the interim, while we have some of these, you know, really good ideas that are percolating, I think we should definitely take some money to do that. And for the other reason to be ready with some projects, if there is a means to do it through capital, maybe not this spring, but next spring, we're ready with what needs to be done and, and understanding what's going on over there. Um, and then I guess the, the last thing I, question I had, um, was more just about the mechanism for this then. We have the townhouse reuse committee, which we have a charge for, which we put out there and got some response. And now Jim has a charge for the three-hundredth anniversary committee, that I think we all agreed with, had minor comments on, which would ostensibly replace it. So are we just going to set aside the townhouse reuse committee and go forward with the three-hundredth anniversary committee?
See, I, I, I see them as two separate things, you know, in a long.
I don't disagree, I'm just wondering what people thought, yeah.
I, I, you know, I, I do see that they weave together in a way, and, and wouldn't it be nice if by the time we get to the three-hundredth, we'd actually done something with the building, right? That'd be very cool, but I think they're two really very separate things. So I think you need to have the reuse committee and the charge that we put together. I also think, and I wanna come back on the three-hundredth committee in a minute, so.
Okay, so just on the townhouse reuse committee, those are ostensibly the folks in the committee that could take David's ideas, work with David and go through that, right?
That's right.
And so I know, and I guess the last time we had an update on that, there wasn't all that much interest from the various boards that we mentioned, right? The planning board and the EDC hadn't put anybody forward to partake, to be a part of that, so.
Well, that's why I wonder if, if a better approach might be for us to do a workshop and perhaps pull in some of the people that are in this business, get our minds more wrapped around it, cause I know I have the ways to go just to understand how it would actually work. And, and then maybe we could begin to pursue others to, to get into when we had something a little more concrete.
Yeah, that makes some sense.
Yeah. Okay.
So I'll, I'll work with Jim and Patrick and get those contacts made.
Thank you. Good conversation. Back to the three-hundredth though, because we did sort of start there.
My bad.
Cause I, I do wanna make sure we're pushing that forward, so where are we with that?
Um, so I'll recirculate the, the charge. I gotta go back and look at my notes, because I know a couple of you guys had some comments on that, but I think we should get it first second meeting in January, finalize everything, get it out, get it advertised. You know, figure out how many do we want, six, seven, nine, fifteen on a committee? Um, narrow that down and then put it out to the public, cause I know there's an interest out there.
And, you know, we had talked a little bit about throwing some ideas out ourselves and all that. I, I'd actually rather just get a committee together, you know, whatever number of people it is, and have them come back and say, look, here's some ideas, right?
Broad enough.
We could certainly feed ideas into it, but, but I, I think you have them bring it back and say, look, here's some things to think about. You could even go back in time and say, look, here's some of the things that we did back in the two-seventy-fifth. Here's some new things that we wanna do for the three-hundredth and bring some kind of a proposal forward, which would then tell us something about, you know, that, that funding that we may have to do over a few years.
Yeah.
Okay?
Well, and I think one of your points was that, from the book you were reading from, was that there were multiple committees. And then maybe even it's, this committee reports back, okay, we're gonna have these committees and this is when we're gonna establish them.
Bingo.
We'll establish a fundraising committee within the first six months and we'll start a process. Um, you know, the parade committee doesn't have to be started till the last six months, but like have a timeline for this various committees to get all these tasks done. Um, and I wonder if perhaps, um, our historic commission, um,
Definitely.
You know, each of them delegate a person from their committee to be on it. And even, uh, as an outside group, the historic, uh, society itself, designate someone to be on it. And, and hopefully also involve the rest of the committee. But more roles are gonna be down the line. This is like, just a, a starting six governing, like, is what I think you're constant contemplating.
Yeah, and then bring ideas forth and then to your point, oh gee, that's a good idea. Now let's, let's get a committee around that idea, right? Off, off you go, right? Good, so, uh, so you, let's, let's do that in, in January. I'd like to really get that one moving.
Okay.
Good. Uh, Ben, you were kind enough to send out an update from the Walpole Housing Partnership, which we didn't put on the agenda, but if the board would allow, I'd like to at least just have a little conversation on it, because it's likely to land on the, the, uh, the town meeting warrant in the spring. So, uh, Ben, well, yours.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. And my intent was just to give an update, and to the extent that people had questions or wanted to discuss, that's fine by me, but certainly, um, seeing as folks just got this on Friday, may not have been able to digest all the information that was in there. Um, I guess first and foremost, it's, it's not clear at this point if the planning board is going to sponsor this article. And it appears likely that, um, you know, that responsibility is going to rest with the select board, should we choose to undertake it, um, similar to what occurred in the fall. So that's something to keep in mind, that everyone should think about and, and think about how they feel about that. Um, so the Walpole Housing Partnership, uh, met recently to put this plan together, to go before the various boards and committees. Um, they have a sequence of meetings that they're gonna be undertaking, both internally, public, and then with these boards. So they'll go before the planning board on January sixteenth for their final meeting with the planning board. And then they'll come before us, um, or it'll be discussed by us on January twenty-first, which is then, coincidentally, when the warrant closes, right? So we'll discuss it. Um, at that point, if the planning board has not sponsored it, we will vote to sponsor it, and then we will discuss the substance of the article. Um, currently, Town Council has the final copy of the zoning board article and the zoning board codes. And they're gonna be reviewing them. They had them last week, so we should hopefully get them back, um, this week at some point. And we're, we're staying on top of that, so that's not a hiccup this time. And then, once that's been finalized through Town Council, that'll be given again to the planning board and it'll be given to all of us on the select board, so folks can review it in advance of the twenty-first, um, for questions or, or any issues like that. Uh, and then lastly, um, it's really just two comments on, on, on the zoning code alterations. From a structural standpoint, they're very similar to what was considered in the fall. Um, there's two, uh, specific revisions. Um, the first is to the density bonuses incentive section, um, which was revised. And it was revised to kind of augment the application, not to give more units to developers as an incentive, um, but to allow them leeway in other areas with setbacks and things of that nature. Um, it's something that's commonly done in other towns. Our consultant brought it to us as an option. Um, I know that a lot of folks were concerned about the density bonuses and rightly so. It's a difficult issue to gauge how it'll impact the town. So the, what we've changed it to, the new, um, code language is actually more conservative than what the town would experience under a forty B. So the forty B is allowed to get around some of the zoning requirements such as setbacks. If we went this route with the I Z B, it would be less conservative than that, so for a, a frame of reference. And then the other change, um, with the code was, um, to the trust article, um, the housing trust article, which I know there was some confusion about and we never really got to discuss in detail at, at this level, um, cause it never got that far. But essentially, and, and what we took from folks' discussion from the planning board and others, is that, um, really need to clarify the role of the trust. Needed to clarify, um, their responsibilities, the limitations to their power, um, and their, really their operational abilities, how they can spend money and, and how that works, who holds the bank, bank accounts or whatnot. So, um, how, how that has been handled is one, to actually put that into the article and to clarify that. But also to say that, um, the Walpole Housing Partnership would be dissolved and a trust would be incorporated in place of the partnership. And that trust would then, um, perform the duties that the partnership had performed, and then also perform the duties as set forth in the article for the trust. And in that way, we don't have two committees that have to be staffed, and we don't have two committees with, with alternate agendas, cause they're really doing the same thing. And, and lastly, I know some people were concerned about possibly housing partnership people kind of flowing into the trust and like then becoming that, that body, um, and that's not the case. So it clearly will state that they will be dissolved. It'll be at the select board's decision then to reincorporate as a trust.
Gotcha.
So, um, I don't wanna take up a ton more time with that, but if anybody has any questions, as ever, definitely reach out to me via email. And, um, as soon as we get that back from Town Council, we'll distribute it.
Okay, any questions for Ben?
Just, so, the bonus would go away and it'd just be, they wouldn't get a choice between a lot bonus and the, the bo, and, they wouldn't have a choice between a bonus and, um, the dimensional, uh, leniency. It would be dimensional leniency instead of the bonus, correct?
Correct.
So is this two articles or one article?
It's still two articles, yeah. It's, it's, it's the same as it was in the fall.
Just with a few changes.
I Z B and the housing trust, two articles.
Alright, great.
None of the changes I described.
I, I'm gonna read through it. I may have questions for you later, but.
Yeah. As will I, uh, but the, the, the main concern I've got is making sure that we have a, a, a very clear understanding of the eighty-seven things that have to happen between now and town meeting. And that we lay it out on a calendar so that we don't have a miss, cause I felt last time we had a, had a little bit of a miss. And so I, I, we gotta just avoid that this time.
Yeah.
This is complicated stuff and, Jim, I don't know if you can offer some guidance on how to, how to lay that calendar, you know? Who, if, who, everyone who has to review it and opine on it and vote it and buy it when, and public hearings and, and all the stuff that needs to go with it.
So while we were sitting here, I just sent Lauren a reminder, Town Council, um, asking where she was with the, the bylaw review, because I know it's been vetted in-house. One of the issues, and not really, just one of those things that happened. We didn't have a community planning director in place. Mike was pretty, still pretty new in the position here, back here in Walpole. Since this has all happened, they've been involved in the process from the end of town meeting. So on a staff end, I'm pretty comfortable with it that they're, because they're comfortable with it. And, um, I know that Lauren has kind of been able to weigh in and point out some of the issues that she saw with it. She's meeting with the housing partnership on January ninth to make sure that they're com- She's meeting with the Housing Partnership on January ninth to make sure that they're comfortable with all the changes that have been made. So on that end, I'm more comfortable with it. I, I think one of the issues that got missed was the, what was it, the public hearing or something like that? That, that won't get, they didn't, they didn't like it, because it was an issue with the wording that was given to us, that I think at the time Audrey and Mike Tealy gave to me, which was really a general wording boilerplate type of thing. This is gonna be much more specialized. And I think the Planning Board Chairman was concerned with that. So that's why it didn't really go forward. But this one, it's, it's done. It's been, we've been working on it since, for the last six months or however long it's been, you know, since we've known all these things by the time they have their public hearing, so...
So the last, the last page in that packet just kinda sets out what needs to be done pre-town meeting. So we've accomplished the initial ZBA and Planning Board introduction, which is item two under pre-town meeting process. Under item three, we've had our meeting on twelve-twelve. Then as Jim just alluded to, there'll be a meeting on January ninth, which is with the final Town Council approved version, ZBA on the fifteenth, Planning Board on the sixteenth, and this board on the twenty-first. At which point, that is, as Jim said again, the finished article language and code language, which will then go forward into the town meeting process for Finance Committee hearings and then the Pl- Planning Board zoning hearing and public hearings, which will take some place between February and April.
Good.
Now, last time, you know, this board had approved the language that then changed after the fact, right? So there will be no change after the twenty-first.
Good.
Just that idea.
Perfect.
Yeah, okay.
Just one quick, I'm sorry, one quick question. The nature of the Affordable Housing Trust and its relationship with the Walpole Housing Partnership, is that in what's going to be decided in spring, at Springtown Meeting? Or is that something for after, if it gets approved?
Yeah. No, it's two, two articles that will be in, at Springtown Meeting. The first article will be the zoning, the IZB inclusion of zoning bylaw. And the second article will be the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust.
Right. But is that, this recommendation that there, that the Walpole Housing Partnership no longer exists part of that? Or is that just...
Oh, yeah. It'll, it's set forth, yeah. So the idea is that would be set forth within the Housing Trust language, to say that we're gonna dissolve the Housing Partnership and then reconstitute a Housing Trust.
I just, I would, I would, I would suggest that the Housing Trust is a very task-oriented, would be a very task-oriented group that I would, I'd like to see finance people on, not necessarily policy people. I'd like to see, it would be very much, okay, this is what we can do and this is the proposal. I think, I think the existence of the Walpole Housing Partnership, I don't think, I think that should still exist as a separate, separate agency, a separate committee, because I don't feel like their task is done. This is only part of their task. I'd like to see them continue on other policy issues and not just, and not stay, you know, be as closely as so did she at the trust. I'd rather, I, you know, a member of Finance Committee should be on the, the Trust Committee, a member of, you know, maybe the staff that, you know, make sure that the fu, the money's being passed out in the right way. I see it more of a administrative agency than... And, and, and then you can have your Walpole Trust say, go to that board and suggest, this is how you might wanna spend the money, or this is, I, I, I could, I don't want it to be as... And it may make some people more comfortable if it's not so, so much of an advocate group or a policy group. It's more of a, a, a group that's managing this money and making sure that we're getting the best use of this money.
Yeah, definitely. And, and those are discussions that we've had and that we had at this past meeting on the fourth. And that certainly some people within the, within the Housing Partnership wanted to keep them separate, but...
Cause you, you have more, like, I, I'm hoping that you come back and, you know, as the Housing Trust proposed open space zoning, other changes to the zoning law, other things out there. And if, if it's mucked up with the trust, I, I don't know that that's...
Yeah. Well, I think one of the ideas was that the trust, at least initially, there's not gonna be any money, so they're not gonna have anything to do ostensibly. The idea would be that the trust absolutely would take forward the housing, the housing plan, the HPP that was put in place before, take the action items that were not achieved thus far, and then take that forward. So it would function as both. You know, we have difficulty in this town staffing committees, such as the Townhouse Reuse Committee, can't get anybody on it. Hopefully we can staff people for three-hundredth. You know, we've had openings for months and years at a time on the Housing Partnership Committee. So I think my, my personal concern, and I know this is shared in discussions with the Housing Partnership, is just being able to find people for these committees and qualified people at that. So that's also a, another concern. And definitely driving it home with, with people that the Housing Trust doesn't spend money. They don't prove money, they don't do any of that. All of that comes through the Select Board and it comes through town meeting, just like any other capital expenditure would take place. So it literally is the Housing Partnership by a different name. And they have then the wherewithal, because a member of the Walpole Housing Authority has a, has a person, I believe it's the Director of the Walpole Housing Authority, who sits on that board, which is helpful. So there's a lot of inter-agency, inter-committee work that can be done and communication that can be had, so...
All right. Let me, it's just something I'm trying to figure out, so thank you for that explanation.
And I guess I would really encourage folks, whether members of this board or otherwise, to look into attending the Housing Partnership meeting on January ninth. Because a lot of these questions, any of these questions could be issued by that point. The goal is to have Town Council's final document, the final code and the final article language. So I would encourage anybody who has questions or wants to know more about this to attend the Walpole Housing Partnership meeting on January ninth.
Good. Ben, thanks for that. I appreciate it. All right, consent agenda is up next. David, do you wanna take us through that?
Following items will be voted as one item. They are...
Can I ask you to separate the first one?
Sure.
Cause I'll abstain on that.
The various donors to libraries materials in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The Walpole Cooperative, another generous donation in the amount of thirty thousand dollars for a new van. Margaret O'Neill, gift to the Council on Aging, and Gloria Deneen, Council on Aging, for two hundred dollars.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Four zero zero.
Great gratitude. And additionally, Friends of St. Patrick, which Mr. O'Neill is the Chair or the President of...
No, I'm not, I'm not. Donnell is.
Okay. Very involved in...
I'm on the board.
Has donated to the Recreation Program Scholarship, three thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
With great appreciation for them.
Thanks, David. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I'll abstain, so three zero one. All right, so where do the town administrators update now? Jim?
Sure. Just a few items here. MSBA, the proposals for the Onus Project Manager are due in tomorrow. The selection group will be meeting with the top three firms, three, four firms on twelve-twenty-three. And I'll work to negotiate a fee with the town, the top firm on twelve-twenty-six or twelve-twenty-seven. So we're progressing. It looks like we're gonna be able to meet the deadline by the MSBA in time for early January to get on their February agenda. Charter change paperwork's been sent into the state at the end of last week. They're being reviewed by the State House Council. They have asked for a word version of the charter and certification by Liz, which we have sent into them. So it's progressing. I thought the board needed to officially send in something, but Lauren determined it was just a simple letter from me that she helped me draft was, was okay. So that's moving along. It's my understanding that Representative McMurtry and Senator Feeney are kinda taking the lead on this one, so... Dupie Street, we received notice from Mass Housing, they were approved for a twelve-unit forty-B project last week. I do not know when the, the developer has some time when he, to, to submit it. I don't know if he's gonna do it right away or not, but that's, that's gonna be coming up soon. ZBA's gonna be very busy. Snow and ice, I briefly, I think, touched upon that as far as funding. Obviously, we're getting hit quicker and harder than we thought we would here. We're down, we've already spent about a hundred-and-fifty thousand as of today. Jody gave me an update. We started with a budget of eighty-eighteen. That doesn't include this storm and some of the old bills from the other storm. So just something I'm gonna be mindful of. I think we're gonna go through that eighty-eighteen. Last year, we, we didn't go through the whole thing, but this year I think we will. Town Hall, just a couple of, closing earlier on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. And one thing that's not on the list here is budget. I'd like to discuss the budget with the board on January seventh, whether it be at, at a six o'clock workshop or during the meeting, one way or another. I want some, I wanna present you folks with what I have for revenues, what I've identified, what some of the major asks for. Obviously, you're, you're gonna guess probably schools, police, fires asked for some, DPW's asked for some. So I'd like to review and highlight some things there before I finalize everything by the end of the month, but...
How much time do you think you need?
To finalize everything?
To, to talk about it.
An hour is sufficient. If we started at six, you know, I, it could be less. Depends on what you think of...
I'm wondering why, why, if we just kept the agenda light one or just do it in the normal meeting?
That, that works for me.
That way people can hear it and...
Give me a half hour and will we go longer? Put it on towards the end of the appointments.
Why don't we do that?
Okay. And I'll get you what I have. I'm pretty close to having a balanced budget already, so... I'm still me with a couple of department heads, but it's almost balanced, which is good. Trying to stay ahead of the curve. And next thing we're gonna get going on is working on a draft warrant, which is, they're both kinda linked together. Obviously, there's, there's multiple articles on there. I'm working with the citizens of South Walpole, a couple, two different groups down there to try to allow parking down in South Walpole for stadium events. We're at the point where we're comfortable with the draft to present to them. I'd rather them submit it as, as a citizen's petition, but I want something that we're comfortable with. We're almost at that point. Ashley, myself and Mike Yanovich have drafted some language. We, we gave them like basically, it's an overlay district essentially. It draws a circle around a certain part of South Walpole, but I have explained it's two-thirds vote, which is not an easy task. I know we have the stretch code thing from discussing, our meet, discussion with Phil a few weeks ago, Housing Partnerships. I am gonna have all six union contracts on the warrant, because they're all up at the end of this fiscal year. Budget, in-year budget adjustments, I'm sure there'll be a few others. But it looks like already we have a pretty full town meeting. And that's not counting any of the zoning bylaws or other citizens petitions I might not know about. Okay. That's it.
Questions for Jim? Okay. I did skip over open forum. We have nobody here, unless, Patrick, unless you'd like to step up to the, the mic here. So we have minutes to approve from November nineteenth. Everybody's, everybody satisfied with it?
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes of November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen.
I'll second that.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Four zero zero. And that concludes our agenda for this evening, so I'll entertain. Actually, before we do that though, we're at that time of year where it's, we're going into the Christmas and holiday season. I think it's appropriate to wish everybody a happy and safe holiday season. And we'll be back at it in January before we know it. So rest up, enjoy time with the family and friends, and we'll all be back soon. With that said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Four zero zero. We're now adjourned. Patrick, thank you. Thanks, everybody. Good night.